Nation, under God, invisible, for the need and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everybody. It's chilly, but we made it. We have a couple of board members gone today, so I'm stepping in. Let's start with approval of the minutes for January eighth, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of the meeting minutes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. There's no persons here to address the board on agenda or non-agenda items. Can I get a motion and a second for the approval of today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The approval of the agenda passes. Next, we have conflicts of interest. There are no conflicts of interest for the day. Can I get a motion and a second for the approval of consent agenda A through C?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Next, we have the reports of the president.
All right. Thank you very much. We have four reports for you today. We'll start with our monthly academic program update. This month, we have horticulture in our sports turf management programs, and I would like to call up Ben Ringling to give that update.
Thank you. I will try to keep it as brief as I can. My name is Benjamin Ringling. I am the Horticulture Technology Instructor. I will be reporting on behalf of Horticulture Technology and also Sports Turf Management for Corey Borgen. He is with his students at a national conference in San Diego, California, so they should be enjoying better weather than what we are doing here. As far as the curriculum go for Horticulture and Sports Turf, we are very similar and, at the same time, very different. The first semester, the first-year students come in and they all take the exact same classes, whether you're Sports Turf or Horticulture, and that's just a great way for everybody to kind of get familiar with everybody. They know who is who, and it's worked really well for us thus far. And they do take Horticulture Science with myself, which is just your introductory introductory to the Horticulture industry, which is right where turf management also falls under. They also take with Corey turf management, where they learn all the grasses and all that type of stuff. They also learn equipment operations and maintenance and pest management slash weeds with Corey. Second semester is where we kind of diverge. We do start offering some gen eds, same for Horticulture and Sports Turf. With me, both cohorts, Horticulture and Sports Turf, do take herbaceous landscape plants, which is how to identify your annual, biannual, perennial plants. And both cohorts with Corey take soils and nutrition, just because we identify those classes as whatever industry you go into, Sports Turf or Horticulture, you have to know your herbaceous plants and you have to know your soils. Horticulture specifically, they take greenhouse class with me. That's where we get greenhouse production in, and we kind of get ramped up for our spring semester, especially that end-of-semester plant sale, which we have right before final week, end of April, beginning of May. Horticulture students have their own internship that they can complete in that spring semester. Sometimes it does get bumped into summertime. Sports Turf kids, other than the two that they take with herbaceous with me, soils with Corey, they take turf grass chemicals in lab, and then they have a spring internship that they can begin taking during that spring semester, and often that does get bumped into the summertime as well. Third semester, second-year students are returning. Another gen ed thrown in there, the same for both cohorts. Sports Turf and Horticulture do take woody plants with myself, where they learn how to identify trees, shrubs, vines. They do both take landscape construction. We have an adjunct landscape instructor that does our landscape classes, so he does landscape construction for both. Greenhouse specifically is for the Horticulture students, where they come back. We already have the moms, Poinsettias waiting for them. And we do have sales in that fall semester. It's kind of fun. Greenhouse one, they get to see how it gets started in the spring from cold to nice, and then summertime, when they come back in the fall, it's usually really hot, and then by the end of it, we're getting ready for winter. So they get to see just what people in the industry would be seeing. Horticulture kids take sustainable Horticulture with me. Sports Turf, they, with Corey, take irrigation principles and practices. Their second internship that is usually completed the end of summer into that fall semester. And then, again, with the Horticulture kids, they do take landscape construction, because we deem that important enough for both programs necessary to be successful at an entry-level position in the field. Fourth semester, so second-year students, right now, they, Horticulture kids specifically are taking Landscape Design, again with Jeff Pepler, and Horticulture kids with me take Garden Center Management. Those are the brains behind the plant sale, all the ideas that they have, they're implementing right now, which is a lot of fun to see. They've already been there, done that. Fruits and vegetables Horticulture kids take with me, and a little bit of an extension of sustainable Horticulture from that third semester. And then both cohorts do take arboretum with me, which is another kind of extension of woody plants that fall semester, where they specifically learn how to work with woody plants, maintaining, pruning, planting. We just went to a conference the last couple of days, and they ended on a big finale with a tree expert on all the tree care stuff that's out there. So that was kind of fun, that they can relate that stuff that we talk about in class in the real-world settings. Sports Turf, fourth semester, formative training with Corey, turf management in sports, and then they also take a more specialized equipment class specifically designed for turf, and I think Corey does have some good pictures in some of his slides. Enrollment trends. This is specifically for Horticulture, but it is pretty amazing how not necessarily that we mirror each other, but we really complement where we always have, right around forty kids total, first year, second year, Horticulture and Sports Turf combined. In the orange is the new students that we have coming in, gray is returning students. On this diagram, pretty proud of that twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, how we had thirteen students walk out the door for their first semester, and then they all came back for that second semester. Every year is a little bit different, but with hopefully some of the changes we've made, we can kind of see some of those results stay more consistent. But we are proud of our retention rate. I would love to see a hundred percent across the board. I know that's pretty much unrealistic, but you never like to see one or two kids drop out. But, long story short, we do kind of average right around seventy-five to eighty percent retention rate, which I think, across campus, that is something that both Horticulture and Sports Turf, very similar numbers, and we are pretty proud of that. Goals and objectives of Horticulture specifically, safety is all the way across the board for both programs. Hopefully, they carry that into the industry with them, because safety in our is huge. You deal with a lot of heavy equipment, chainsaws, wood chippers, so we get them out to operate all that type of stuff, always ensuring that they have proper PPE, the personal protective equipment, and they go through the necessary trainings to be as safe as possible. Integrated pest management, we have a lot of diseases and a lot of pests out there. We learned that for two days straight at this conference, and we just want the students to know, you don't have to go straight to the chemical closet. There's cultural, biological, preventative measures that you can utilize before we go to some of those harsher chemicals. Professional communication, we really preach both professionalism and communication, whether you're in a school setting, workforce setting, at home. Technical skills being a hands-on, two-year tech school, we want to get the tools in their hands, we want them to dig the holes, we want them to deal with the irrigation, work with the heavy equipment, so they can feel safe and be able to do that when called upon at their entry-level jobs. Collaboration and problem solving, we always work in groups. We don't mind if the groups work together to get something accomplished. I always say, if you have a problem, you can come to me, but always have a solution as well. So you can figure out ways to alleviate the issues that you come across. Plant classification identification is huge. We always have kids that come and visit the program that are on the fence. Why should I come here? If I already have a business, I'm already in the industry. And I just say, to try to identify all the trees, all the shrubs, all the flowers, all the grasses, all the weeds, without any type of schooling or anything like that, is just, would be horrible. So we really do drive that home, starting with that first Horticulture class and then kind of scaffolding them throughout the program. Conservation and best management practices is big for both programs. Water management, we're part of the green industry, and if you look at it, sometimes we tend not to be so green with plastic, waste, that type of stuff. So we practice composting. We practice water conservation. We practice the IPM, where you're not just utilizing chemical after chemical. We do have a summer academy, where we get typically juniors going into their senior year. They get to take the introductory Horticulture class, get dual credit. They have an industry sponsor, so they work with somebody as well as going to class with me. So we learn the curriculum in the classroom. We get outside for lab and get the hands-on experience. We learn the content, and then we go practice it. And then they also get to take it a step further and practice what they're learning with their specific sponsor. Really a win-win-win for everybody. Some program highlights, we just did an extensive program review. Learned where our weak spots are in the curriculum, where the strengths are, so that was a lot of fun. New class, sustainability, that top left photo, we grew some popcorn, some Native American corn in the garden, and we brought a popcorn machine in to pop it, some degree of success. Some dill there with a swallowtail caterpillar, so the kids are actually getting out into the field and practicing important, yet fun, concepts. Our outdoor labs are critical to a two-year hands-on tech school. We have an outdoor garden space for Horticulture. Corey has some great pictures for his labs. Community partnerships, that's a picture of us with the Master Gardeners. We work extensively with them. We just got done with the South Dakota Nursery and Landscape Association Conference. A lot of really quality industry partners that we saw there. You always kind of worry, are the students going to show up? And if they do, how are they going to represent? And it's fun to see how they just always knock it out of the park, and they're professional, and really prove to be good role models and represent Southeast Tech really well. And then we do have, this year we have three plant sales. The Mung, Poinsettias, and our big annual plant sale, and that's that top picture. You see Kellaland came, interviewed all of our students. I was glad they didn't interview me this year, because the students, it's great to see them, again, say stuff that you talk about in the classroom, and some of the stuff that they said is just something you might randomly say. And it's fun to know that they pick up on that type of stuff, and they get to represent themselves and show their parents, family, friends, just how, what we have going on at the STC Horticulture Program. So for Corey in the Sports Turf Management, he is the poster child for getting the kids outside and just being as hands-on as possible. And if he wasn't in Sports Turf, he'd probably be in marketing, because he can set up the best photo ops that I've worked with in the professional setting. We do have a golf hole on campus with our own tee box, fairway, green. Kids are always out there mowing, fertilizing, doing experiments. We have a pitcher's mound. He bought a paint machine where he can paint our logo, which is a lot more work than just going out and painting something. The amount of measurements that he has to go through is crazy extensive, but if it's nice, and maybe even not so nice, he has those kids outside and they're doing something on that golf hole. He has a lot of success stories. You're probably lucky that he's not here right now, because he'd have another twenty minutes of just talking about his success stories, which he should be very proud of. He had students go to the Denver Broncos, Atlanta Falcons, Boston Red Sox, Milwaukee Brewers, and I'm sure I'm forgetting some. So he has a lot of people that go out and experience the industry, and he really prides himself on how they usually always find themselves back, which students here did go out and worked for the Falcons, and now he is the superintendent at the golf course in Freeman. Another one of those stories, student went to Pebble Beach for at least a year in California, and he made his way back and is now the superintendent at the Brookings Country Club. So his success stories, he's proud of. That's why he likes to put those in his presentations. He has a former student that is now the director for grounds at the Milwaukee Brewers. Another great resource for him, as far as he has somebody to come and talk to his class that's been there, done that, both at this program and at the professional level. He constantly sends students to Milwaukee to work for this specific students, former students, to help him fill those internship and other opportunities. And he's really proud, and he should be, of the Sanford International. I don't know how he gets the kids from Sunday to Sunday for a full week to get up and be there by five AM, day after day. It's, I was impressed when I was in the industry watching it, and I'm still impressed being, well, now even more impressed when I see how the students like to sleep in. Everybody does at five. But I think it's because we have such good buy-in from the country club, from Sanford, from our leadership, and from the students, both Sports Turf and Horticulture. It's kind of fun. The Horticulture kids are like, can we go? Yes, absolutely. Have fun. I'll probably be sleeping at five. But it's a fun week that is, they put in almost a full day of work by the time they get to class, so that's pretty impressive for the students and Corey. Has a lot of good community partners. He always likes to get out to the first green event, trying to get his students in front of some other younger kids and showing what our industry is all about and how you can have fun. And another extension of that is all the people on the left donated to his program and helped raise eight thousand dollars to get his students to that national conference that they're competing at today in San Diego, California. So that, in a nutshell, I hope I wasn't too extensive, is a overview of the Horticulture Technology Program at Southeast Tech and the Sports Turf Management Program.
Does anybody have questions, comments?
I have a question. So I see on your fall enrollment slide for Horticulture, you had a transfer student. And I'm just curious, did that student come from a four-year program or another two-year program?
Those are students that did a spring start, so we just started offering. Otherwise, before, it was you had to start in the fall, and if you wanted to start any other time, you had to wait for the fall. And we talked, and we realized that if they do start that second semester, it would just be two, one, three, four, and they can still get, or four, three. They could still get through the program in four years. They would just graduate in December.
Thank you.
I have three questions. The first one is, you talked about some of the kids and where they're working out in the world. What's your overall placement?
Overall job placement for the last several years has been about a hundred percent. And the turf kids, for whatever reason, they do like to go out and get those, I mean, because a lot of them want to work for sports fields, so they do go out to the professional football, professional baseball. For Horticulture, we're all over the place. We have kids that are interested in floral arrangements, Hy-Vee floral. Some of them work for local farms with fruit and vegetable production. Landscaping is big, landscape companies throughout the industry, nurseries. Garden centers is another one that's really extensive. We do have a lot of landscape companies throughout the state that employ, and also parks departments. Sioux Falls Park and Rec is big. Brookings is kind of getting bigger and wanting to get some of our students. McCory Gardens likes to get our students, even though they have SGSU right there, so that's kind of fun. I talked to them at the conference, and they're, do you have anybody to send us? Maybe. So those are some of the main areas that they go into.
Yeah, the last one, when the industry got together with you all a few years ago, when you stood the industry morning talks, it was a packed room, so it looks like the demand is there. Sports Turf, do you look at any of the artists, do you do anything with artificial turf?
Yes. It's on the radar, because a lot of the schools do that. We worked extensively with Mammoth Construction, who was in charge of putting in the fields for Sanford. They're on our advisory board currently, and we know that it's a big part of the industry and growing. The students, we have Horticulture presentations in my Intro to Horticulture class, and man, I think five of them talked about artificial turf versus natural. And the consensus was for professional fields that have the money to pay for maintenance. Most of them like either the Sports Turf or maybe a hybrid version of that. But the small high schools that can get that one-time fund, they like the artificial turf, because it looks good, and it's just little to no maintenance. So that's where the smaller schools, which you kind of think that they wouldn't be able to afford it, but that's where they're trending towards.
And then my last question is, is your program responsible for the geraniums that you grow and we get?
Yep.
Thank you. They're wonderful. They bloom all summer long and...
The first year we got to the plant sale, I'm like, whatever you guys pick, we're going to send to the lady, and she's going to get us signed up, and they were out there. And she was like, is that your complete list? I was like, hmm, I'll get you more later. And I put down the geraniums and the petunias and the marigolds and the stuff that is kind of tried and true, and you know, is going to sell, but I don't think there's going to be another year where I don't have a geranium. I don't think I've spent a year in the industry where I haven't grown geraniums.
They're great. Thank you. They're appreciated.
I had a question. If you work with the CTE Academy, who has their new greenhouse coming up, and then we have a green space by Axelle Park, and then the Lenburg Project, I'm wondering if you're working with K-12 on any of those?
Yeah, we've had meetings for, I think, all of those at least, and with the CTE Academy, I'm on their advisory board, and kind of sat down and talked to them about their greenhouse. They're kind of having a little bit of a pretty similar to what we have going on at Southeast Tech, so I told them some of the issues that we had. I think they're only having a single bay and not the two, that gives that valley for the snow load that we've been dealing with, not this year, but previous years for sure. Where that snow just drifts and drifts and drifts off that building and can really cause a lot of panic. When you get there, just, I'm going to check the greenhouse brick, and then you're like, oh, it could collapse.
Yeah. That's really exciting. Those are going to be great partnerships and a nice pipeline.
Yeah, we try to identify those, get in a room with them, see how we can work with our students with any other maybe middle school or high school students, even into elementary.
Tagging on to what Don Marie said, we have a Lincoln's Collins project coming up too. I don't know if you're going to be involved with that or are involved. That's a future project where the old Lincoln L stood.
Okay. I haven't heard about that yet, but...
Hot off the press.
There you go.
There you go.
Can I get a motion to acknowledge the academic program update Horticulture and Sports Turf report? A motion, can I get a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That announcement is approved. Next, we have student engagement report.
All right. I'd like to invite up Callie Jorgensen, who is joined by a couple of students as well, so, thank you.
Yes, thanks, President Klosman, and board members, thanks for having us today. I'm Callie Jorgensen, student success advisor and student engagement coordinator on campus, and yes, it wouldn't be a student engagement presentation without students, so I brought two along with me, so I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
My name is Trinity. I'm a second-year student at Southeast Tech in the Early Childhood Program, and I am in the Early Childhood Organization and Student Government Association, and I also was a part of intramural volleyball.
I'm Angel. I'm the first-year student for mechanical engineering technology. I'm art roots and a SGA.
All right. So I want to sort of just give a little background about my experience and just kind of my philosophy on student engagement and how we kind of got here. So I just joined STC in August. I got my Bachelor of Arts at the University of North Dakota, and that's where I really started getting involved as a student there, and that's kind of where my love for student engagement started. So I decided to pursue my master's degree at Southern Methodist University in 2014 and got my degree in 2016, and was able to work in a few different offices, the Community Engagement and Leadership Center and Student Activities during my time as a graduate there. So you see that top picture is my time with some students on a service trip at SMU. So after getting my master's, I worked at the University of North Texas for three years in their Student Activities Center as a coordinator of student organizations, and the middle picture is an opportunity that I got to have to lead a group of students at a leadership retreat called Leadership at my time at UNT. I came back to the Midwest in 2019 and worked at Augustana University for five years in the student engagement office and also as a hall director, and the last couple of years was the catering manager on campus. So this last picture was my first fall back in the Midwest. It was the first week of October. It was our homecoming parade, and it was snowing, so that was quite the adjustment for me to be back. But all of this connected, obviously, I've been at lots of different places, but my passion and my philosophy for student engagement has always kind of been the same. We're always wanting to make sure that students are connected, feeling a sense of belonging, making friends. And really, my passion is to help students connect and feel engaged through those co-curricular experiences, those out-of-classroom experiences, and make sure they're also kind of learning and understanding that they're learning a lot of transferable skills through those opportunities as well. So that's a little bit of my background and how I've kind of come here. So when I joined STC in August, the first kind of month or so, I really spent a lot of time talking with our VP, Megan, and our colleagues, and my colleagues, just about what student engagement has looked like, where we were at, and just kind of getting some feedback of where we wanted to move forward. So we decided to start by creating a survey, kind of reaching out to students and getting a sense of where they were at. And so we built this survey on our STC wellness wheel, so there are six dimensions that you can see there. Academic, career, emotional, physical, financial, and social. So we really built this survey on those six dimensions, sent that out mid-September, and we were able to get six hundred and thirty-nine students to respond to that survey, which we were really thrilled about. So just a few highlights from that survey is eighty percent of those students that responded were our traditional age students, eighteen to twenty-two years of age, and eighty-two of those students live on campus. A few other things to kind of highlight, things that had some high numbers. Fifty percent of students did indicate that they wanted in-person workshops. Fifty-eight percent wanted to attend a resume help session, and fifty percent indicated they were interested in a LinkedIn profile help session. Fifty-one percent said that they would participate in a thirty-minute activity between classes. We had two really high numbers in our financial section about wanting more information on personal finances and how to buy a home. And then some interesting things came out of the questions around our social of just students thinking that a lot of these are great ideas, but I just do not have a lot of time to engage, and I'm very busy. So we kind of used all of these numbers to kind of think about what we were going to do moving forward, how we were going to continue to engage students, and thinking about specifically, you know, what are they looking for from our involvement on campus? So you'll see the last thing kind of on here is physical as well. Our intramurals have been pretty popular, and you can see that there is still some... Our intramurals have been pretty popular, and you can see that there is still some interest in that and some indication of some popular sports that are maybe like pickleball, you can see on there is becoming very popular. That was one of the top sports that students said that they would like to see us provide. So after we did that, we did kind of kick off our fall with our five intermurals in the fall semester. So we had bowling, which they bowl at Sport Bowl. We had disc golf, which they do on campus here or at STC. Soccer is also on campus behind our housing in a field over there. Trap shooting, Heads to Crooks Gun Club. And volleyball participates in their league at George McGovern Middle School. We use their gym space to do that. All of these intermurals have an advisor or two that are faculty or staff member that help me coordinate and be there to help assist those students. And these range from anywhere to six weeks to our longest, which is volleyball, which is 12 weeks. And we had 175 students participate in our field intermurals, so we're very proud of that. So you'll see some pictures here from a few of those. The bottom picture is Da Boys was their team name from our volleyball league. So they were really excited. I think they were almost undefeated the whole season, so. And we also offer academic organizations. So we have 10 academic organizations that are tied to specific programs on campus and are advised by faculty members in that program. And so they're doing everything from meeting on campus to industry events to community service and volunteering to networking. Bennett talked about Cory's, you know, with a group right now at a conference, and they had done the Sanford International and volunteered their time there. So these academic organizations are very active and very busy. The top picture here is our Sonography Student Organization, and they participated in Light the Night, which is an annual event hosted by the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society in Falls Park. That was in September, and so they participated in that. And then I'm gonna have Trinity here talk a little bit more about early childhood because they had a very busy fall and she got to participate in many of those events.
So some of the things that I've learned through the Early Childhood Organization is some leadership opportunities, like planning meetings, presenting in front of people. Community service, we served at the banquet, and we actually made like a little area for kids in the banquet. And being able to see like kids who don't have a lot, just seeing their faces light up was really amazing. We have some civic engagement and marketing skills. As you can see, the bottom picture is whenever we break the leaves. So we will go out into the community to somebody who maybe isn't as mobile anymore and we'll rake their yard for them. So that was really cool, too.
All right, and we also have eight clubs on campus. So I kind of call these our special interest groups, and they're all advised by a faculty or staff member who shares kind of that interest. So you'll see that list here. Trinity and Angel are both members of our Student Government Association, which we have seven student leaders who have been helping plan and kind of fine-tune and see what the needs of our student body are. We have Southeast Pride Club, Gaming Club, Campus Crusade for Chrysler Crew. This picture with the three students holding the grocery bags, Crew had a grocery bingo in October, and these three students were kind of the big winners. You can see they walked away with several bags. So they had over 50 students participate in that event, so that was a great success for them. We have Turning Point USA, Veterans Club, our SCC Literary Magazine. That top picture is our stories. So last spring, they published their first magazine, and so they spent this fall semester collecting submissions in five different categories: digital art, photography, graphic stories and comics, poetry and short stories. Basically collecting submissions in those categories from students to be creative. And they're working hard on putting a magazine together for this spring right now. So really excited to see what that will look like. And then our Roots Multicultural Club was also busy in the fall, and Angel is a member, so I'm gonna let Angel talk a little bit about some of the things that he got to do with that.
At Roots, I got to learn a lot about the rich backgrounds and traditional experiences of all the students that attended. I also made a lot of friends and connections through that club and enjoyed a lot of the planned events that we had. It felt like every week there was something new to learn. And that picture there with the students holding the pumpkin and carving it was our event for October where we represented Europeans how they carve pumpkins to water evil spirits.
All right, and then just some other notable fall events that we had. We kicked off the academic year with a picnic and activities fair in the hub. So we had over 1,200 SCC community members participate in that. We partnered with the Community Blood Banks. The Community Blood Bank came in September, and that was an option for students and faculty and staff to donate. And so we had 31 units donated, which helped 90 few local patients, which is always great. SGA helped with the Adding Back to Community or ABC Drive in October as a part of STC Days. They collected one ton of non-perishable food items, toiletries and winter gear that was all put back into our campus cupboard, so that was a really great success. On a very, very rainy and cold November day, we headed to Great Shots, and 100 students came and got to golf and socialize and have some food, kind of get away from studying and just kind of have some good community, and so that was a great success. And then we finished the semester with the De-Stress Event, which I think you maybe have heard a little bit about from our partnership with Wellbeing with from Megan last month, but we had 174 students participate in this event, just full of de-stress activities the week before finals. So that was a huge success, and it was rated a 4.06 out of five stars by our students who gave us some feedback about that event. And Trinity was actually able to be there, so she just wanted to share some of her thoughts on that event.
One thing that I thought was really interesting is being able to see something so big come together and being a part of that planning was really cool because I've never really been a part of something, like planning something big like that. And then another thing was I got a lot of feedback from like peers saying that it was a really fun day, like, "Are we gonna do it again?" Like, they really enjoyed it. And it was perfect because it was like the week before finals, so everybody was stressed out. And just being able to come in and relax and not worry about anything for just a couple hours was really cool.
All right, and we obviously just got the spring semester started, but we're already very deep into things happening this semester. So we have three intermurals happening right now this spring. Last week, we started basketball, so we have 13 teams competing over at George McGovern each week in a basketball intermurals. We have bowling happening again each week at Sport Bowl. And then we are trying out a new intermural this semester. We are doing skiing and snowboarding. So they started last night. It was very cold out here. But they started last night, and there's actually an opportunity for students to do lessons as well over at Great Bear. So we're excited to see how that one turns out and just having another option for students during the winter when we know that people are cooped up and kind of wanting to do some of that physical activity. So some other things happening. So our spring academic orgs are also very busy. Of course, Ben had mentioned that Cory's gone, obviously, at a conference with his students. The Home Builders Association is gonna be traveling to Las Vegas later this month to be a part of the International Builders Show. Our Nursing Student Organization has several events already planned. I put in their flyer here because I thought it was fun for them to share all the things they have going on. And then Skills USA will be heading to the state competition in April as well. So lots of networking and industry opportunities and hands-on experience and things that our academic orgs are doing. And then just to highlight some of the spring events that we know are coming up. So we already had the Community Blood Bank, the Blood Mobile on campus in January, and then we'll come back in April, so that's a pretty regular reoccurring thing that we all have as an option for our community. On Saturday, we have 25 students attending the Stampede Hockey Game, and so that was a good opportunity for students to get off campus and do something different. So 25 students got the opportunity to win a ticket to that game. And then sodas and smiles in the talent show are two events that these two are planning, so I'm gonna let them share about those.
So for sodas and smiles, we will be selling crushed sodas for a dollar, and all the proceeds from that will go to the SCC student cupboard so that we can help the students on campus that may need some extra help. And we're hoping, we're also gonna have some Epsom salt bags to hope people can have some relaxing time at home or give it to someone they love or something like that.
The talent show is one of our events that's happening towards the end of this month, and it's the most promising thing I think I should look forward to since we have students performing and entertaining the crowd, but not only do we also have staff who are judging for the event. I'm gonna be the emcee. I'm gonna be handing out cash prizes of 300, 200, and 100 to first, second, and third place winners.
And just a few other things on here that we decided to do kind of based on those survey results that I talked about at the beginning is we're gonna offer home buying and mortgage presentations, and that's a partnership with Brookshire Hathaway. We're gonna do a professional photo opportunity for students so they can just pop by and take a professional photo, and then we'll also be available to look at their resumes and help them with LinkedIn. We're gonna celebrate all of our student leaders because they do amazing things and we want to celebrate them. We'll have STC Days and do some service again in April. And then De-Stress Fest was obviously popular, and so we're gonna bring that back the week before finals this semester as well. And then just a few other things about where we're going. So we're gonna continue to just evaluate. So obviously, there were some sports that students had mentioned in the survey that they were interested in, so we're gonna continue to evaluate our participation numbers and our offerings each semester to just make sure that we are staying up to date with what students are wanting to participate in. We're also looking at changing from a student government model or SGA to a more of a student programming model based on input from our survey and our student leaders. So we're doing some benchmarking of other technical institutions to kind of see what that might look like. And then we just wanna kind of get a pulse of the campus and make sure that we're adapting to the needs of the students. What worked last year might not work this year. What worked last semester might not work this semester, and so we just wanna make sure that we are constantly getting a pulse of our campus and kind of using our resources and our time and making sure that we're providing things that the students want to attend and will benefit them, so. All right, and just a few last fun pictures. This was Tilly, our service, one of the service dogs who came to De-Stress Fest who got in the photo op. They did some dress-up nights at volleyball this last fall, which was really fun. So it was a board game night, and this is the team that dressed up as Clue. And then Roots also had a pie-making event in the fall, so that was a student with their pie that they made. So do you have any questions for us?
Questions for Callie, Trinity, Angel, Kama?
Sounds like you're on a good roll. Keep it up.
I have a question for the two of you.
Oh, yes.
What's your most proud moment since being enrolled at Southeast Tech?
I actually just on Saturday got to speak at an early childhood conference, so that was really big for me, and I was really honored to be chosen to do that. So I feel like that's probably my biggest accomplishment. There was about 300 people there, so. Yeah.
Yeah, we love that.
Getting to speak here.
Getting to speak here, yeah. We love that even more. Are you guys gonna put this on your LinkedIn profile, as one of your speaking engagements? I think you should. Yeah, this is all amazing. Callie, thank you so much for putting students first, and we really appreciate you bringing students in to hear from their perspective and commend you both for being involved, as involved as you are. And I look forward to see you guys emerging leaders. We hope to keep you in Sioux Falls. So whatever we can do, any of us, to get you engaged in something you're passionate about, all these folks can get ahold of us, okay? Thank you for being here.
Can I get a motion to acknowledge the Student Engagement Update Report?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign. The acknowledgement passes. Next, we have Access and Workforce Opportunity Report.
I'd like to ask Marcela Prokop to come up, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Board, Vice President Johnson. Thanks for having me today. I have an update on access and workforce opportunity, but really, I'm just going to be focusing on our Access Coach Program. We have two Access Coaches this year. It is our second year of Jackie Hartman, our English Language Access Coach, doing her work in all four of the high schools. And then it is our first year for Shasta Weston, our Indigenous Access Coach, doing work in the high schools as well, but then also reaching back a little bit further and planning to do some work with eighth graders as well. So the English Language Access Program, our goal is to assist multilingual high school students, mostly juniors and seniors, but of course there are freshmen and sophomores who interact with Jackie and want to participate with Jackie. We want to help them with that transition to college because we understand that these students maybe don't have parents who are speaking English, who are able to attend events during the school day or even in the evenings because they are working or caring for other children. It's a very time-intensive program, working with these students, working with their families. Jackie has met with students at libraries, met with students' parents at workplaces just because she wants to accommodate the schedules that work for those families. And we know that for our multilingual families in the school district, it's not just the student who is involved, it's an entire family decision a lot of times to attend college. So we want to make sure that those families have all the information that they need as well so that they too can think about workforce for themselves or their kids. We have done a survey with the students. We start with a one-on-one survey so that the Access Coaches can understand, what is it that you as a student know about yourself? What do you know about the college-going process? What don't you know? And through that survey that is completed at the beginning of those interactions in the fall, the Access Coaches can really individualize the support that they're providing to the students, ensuring that if the student already knows, "I know I want to go to Southeast Tech. I know I want to go into sports turf." We don't have to do that career exploration as much. We're figuring out scholarships, deadlines. What does that look like if you're going to apply for something? How do you put your best foot forward to get that scholarship so that you can have help with the cost? So last year, Jackie presented to 178 multilingual students to share about the opportunity. So that was just getting in front of that many students to say, "I'm available. This is what this program will look like." She ended up working with 30 seniors, so in that number, she also had some juniors, she had some sophomores, but she didn't work with them as individually and as regularly as she did with those 30 seniors. She is working with 28 seniors this year. And six of those students that she worked with last year worked very intently with her on scholarships. And all six of those students who worked with her received scholarships. Two students received full-ride scholarships. One of those students received a Build Dakota Scholarship and is just tickled to be at Southeast Tech and is doing a great job there. Eight of the students that she worked with last year worked with Jackie over the summer. We built a mini-class. We had an LMS. We had access to discussion boards, and Jackie was able to give students a little bit of a sneak peek at what it's like to work in the LMS at Southeast Tech and complete a discussion board and get familiar with that technology. Those eight students, the students who worked with Jackie over the summer are still doing well. They're at Southeast Tech. 12 of the students that she worked with last year enrolled in higher ed of some form. So that doesn't mean that they necessarily came to Southeast Tech. Some of them went elsewhere, but they went on. Six of the students who came to Southeast Tech ended their fall semester with As and Bs, and these are the students who participated in her summer program as well. Then the other students who came to Southeast Tech but who did not enroll in her summer program, they're at Southeast Tech and they're persisting, but they're not in that A and B level that she does have regular contact with them and is continuing to help them, support them, see them through whatever success looks like for them. And then four who did not come to summer school. Then nine of the 30 who didn't enroll are working and saving for college, and Jackie is still in contact with them to help them think about what is the next step. Remember FAFSA, remember scholarships, those sorts of things. So as I mentioned, this was the first year for Indigenous Access Program, and the goal is the same, to work very closely with our native students and families to help them understand the pathways to college, to help them think about career opportunities, what they want to do when they enter workforce, and how to find a meaningful college program for them to get that training. So she and Jackie both started at Lincoln a little later this year. We went to a parent consent form model this year. We did not have a parental consent form last year. And so with that, it just took a little bit longer for families at Lincoln to get consent forms back in. So they both got a little of a late start there. But Shasta's wins, she's got 28 students in the high schools, working with her one-on-one, getting some of that coaching from her. She is seeing increases in attendance with all of the students that she's working with. And that is not to say that all of them have terrible attendance, but just she is seeing that they are excited to come to school and they're happy to work with her. One student told her, "My goal for this semester is to improve my grade in X class. If I don't raise that grade, I'm gonna come sit with you every day that you're here." If I don't raise that grade, I'm gonna come sit with you every day that you're here and that's gonna be kind of embarrassing because you're old. So they're they're finding their ways through, you know, the motivation that they need to be doing good work. Um we have seen some GPA increases for students and without sharing a lot of details, one student went from a one. To a two point eight seven five GPA, so they started the school year at a one, they went to this two point eight seven five. Um when Shasta did her last check a few weeks ago. Um there's language revitalization happening for some of these students too and that's been really fun to hear Shasta tell me about. The differences and and what students know and what she knows and how they kind of compare notes and are able to talk about things. And then there's that accountability and goal setting in personal and academic life, you know, the example that I just shared with you of the student saying. Here's my goal, I wanna raise this grade, if I don't, then I'm gonna come hang out with you even more. And so that's really encouraging to hear that the students are finding a confidant and finding somebody that they're interested in talking to and working with. So we surveyed roughly a hundred and fifty families in December regarding college and career pathways at the December solstice meal. Uh not all one hundred and fifty families responded to the survey, but what we did learn from those who completed a survey. Was that there is very little knowledge among those who completed the survey. Of scholarship opportunities, of financial aid, of P L, of what makes somebody eligible or ineligible for those sorts of things, so. That's one area where we know, okay, now we've gotten some feedback from the community, we can think about what do we do. To make sure that we're closing some of those gaps in knowledge moving forward. Um we are working on an eighth grade event, this will be in March, uh we're communicating, we're collaborating with the Office of Indian Education and the liaisons. Um and our goal for this event is to work with all of the eighth graders and their families. To let them know about Shasta and this opportunity, to help them start thinking, alright, you're getting ready to start high school next year, what do you know? What don't you know about what high school means in terms of career prep, C T E opportunities, dual credit opportunities? And then college pathway opportunities. We don't wanna wait until a student is a senior to start having that conversation with them, especially if we need to make sure that the whole family has time. To think about all the different uh resources that are out there that they're unfamiliar with. Um and so we're we're starting with eighth grade and I realize that the at the post-secondary level, that maybe seems like a stretch. But we really think it's a long game that we wanna play to ensure that we're getting feedback from the community that we're trying to serve, not just making up ideas of what we think we should be doing. Um so while Jackie is working only with eighth graders through our eighth grade industry visits. Shasta is very intentionally working to connect with the eighth grade families across the Sioux Falls School District. So our goals for this spring are really to just continue building relationships, Shasta now has been in for one semester, but we know there's opportunity for her to get in front of more students. More classrooms, in front of the O S O classes and just really say, hey, here's the days that I'm at your school, here's where I'm at, please come find me. We can work with your counselor, we can work with your teacher, if you've got questions, let me know and I can assist you with those sorts of things. Um we will continue our E L summer program uh with the E L team in the Sioux Falls School District. We found some value in that and we would like to expand that in the future, but as funding allows and as capacity allows, um we will do that, but for now. What we did last year was with the summer school students who were at Excel, Jackie would go over every day, she would have a little office, students could come in and do. The um online class with her and then they could have little mini assignments to work on at home if they wanted to work on those things as well. So that was a good opportunity and we will continue to do that this year. We have a Build Dakota workshop coming up on the thirteenth, this is geared towards families. Uh Denny Martin, the program manager for Build Dakota, will be in town and so she will be speaking at this event. And we are hoping that families can come and ask questions because we really want them to know about the opportunities that exist with Build Dakota. We had a scholarship application workshop today, uh we had four students show up, but all four started working on scholarship applications. Our period for scholarship application at Southeast Tech is January through the end of March. And so if we can get those students started, if we can allay any fears about, I don't know, how do I determine if I'm eligible, what does this mean? Um today was a good start with four students. And then we will be doing a FAFSA workshop in partnership with the Multicultural Center. Uh we hosted one last year, it was successful, so we will implement the same model in the future and try to get in. More families from across the region so that they can learn about FAFSA scholarships, et cetera. So that is my update and I will wait for any questions.
I've got a question.
Yes.
So the expansion of the Native American Summer School Program is based on funding. So you don't have enough money. Well, we'll have to see what we can do about that.
I'm always dismayed when I, and I know it's reality, but when I see that there are students and families. Your word is overwhelming when they have to make that transition from eighth grade to high school. What suggestions do you have for us, how can we make that better for our students?
Well, I have limited experience, right, because this is still a pilot program, but one of the things that. That I have seen when I was at the sol- solstice event or what I have heard from Shasta or others. Is that for them to have somebody who can understand where where they might have come from. Um to understand the process of tribal enrollment, to understand what it's like to want to speak your language, but maybe not have had. Family members to pass that on to you and to to work to acquire that skill. Um I think having that trusted adult is is really in this case where we're seeing success. Because they know that they can ask Shasta a question and even if it wasn't her exact experience. She's gonna know more than I would know about how to answer that question, right? So so I think that's a a positive step that we're seeing in in partnership with the school district, I think we're all benefiting from what we're learning in this process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean what we know to be true is for Native American students, our dropout rate. When you hit ninth grade is significantly higher than any other walk of life. And so even just by you saying, you know, it seems a little ambitious to start at eighth grade, it's not. It's probably the most pivotal time to get in and see those students and then to have someone who looks like them. Come in and say it's possible, you're planting seeds of something that they might have never heard before. And so I really, really appreciate this this opportunity that you guys have had, it's been such a joy to see Shasta show up. I've been able to be at Roosevelt in Washington and she came when I was there speaking. And she already had really beautiful relationships with kids who were there just to see her. And it might have been the only time they were there that week.
You were old news, Don Marie, they were there for her.
They were there for the old ladies, both of us just coojies, that means grandmas. Um so it is, it's valuable, it it's, I'm really looking forward to seeing. Um the data of tracking some of those students, seeing if their dropout, you know, some of our dropout rates kinda fluctuate in a better light. As we have more access to these programs and even with our E L students and Jackie, when I worked at Astell Park. That was a real barrier for students having um parents who didn't speak English and they worked all night. They couldn't go to those FAFSA nights, so if you can catch them while they're at school, have that conversation with somebody, help them through it. They're gonna be more likely to get get to Southeast Tech or other places. So that accessibility is so vital in our to- in today's society for the. The the average student, I would say, is usually at a disadvantage. So it's not even just Native, it's not even just Yale, um all students deserve this sort of access and support. So I'm just so happy to see this happening, um as Mark said, let's figure it out, right? Um but thank you for your work, I mean I I run into you everywhere at community events, so I know that 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 makes a difference too. And to all of you Southeast Tech folks that I run into at community events, that matters. And that's why Southeast is such a prevalence and a presence in our community is because you guys are well-known just as people. And so you are a trusted space, so just continue to do those things, the community events things, bringing students in. You you guys can take my spot, you really can, this is what we want, we want you guys to be seated here one day. So love what access does at Southeast Tech and look forward to seeing that grow. Thank you, Marcel. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the access and workforce opportunity update report? I have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, acknowledgement passes, next we have. I am.
I said she was too young to be oochie.
Male version?
I'm old enough to be that.
I'll think of it, I don't know, alright, last we have facilities master plan.
Alright, no, it's all good, um so I'm here to present our campus master plan, I'm gonna skip over these slides just a little bit. Um so since last May, a team has been working with a group from I S G to develop an overall campus master plan. Um and so it kicked off in May, we had multiple meetings throughout the fall. Um and wrapped up the work through December and so I S G really worked to facilitate. Uh the work of the campus group, really thinking through what is it that we want the campus to look like uh twenty years from now? So whether it's taking what we currently have, um and any revisions or expansions that we may want, plus as we think about. The college growing, what could the campus look like with future buildings as well, so it's really focused on growth and development. Um if we are gonna expand facilities, um student housing, which we'll talk more about just a little bit. Um the group talked a lot about walkability and accessibility and making sure that the campus was still. Not only walkable, but that it was accessible to all people, um and that we were being inclusive in how we develop our buildings. Um in particular with uh Boys Park going in on the northwest corner of campus. Um how are we making sure that we are connecting with what is gonna be happening within the local community? Um and that as we think about what is it that we need or need to have access to for our campus and for our students. Um that we're not duplicating, but we're just making sure that we're connecting both just in terms of services, but also in the physical connection that we have to those facilities as well. Making sure that we're continuing with our branding and wayfinding so that we are consistent with our branding. Um and when people are on campus, they know where they are and where it is that they are going. Um and then continue to have a focus on open space, we don't just wanna cram in all of our buildings. And lose the grass um and the trees that we have, it's part of what makes the campus beautiful. And we wanna make sure that we continue to have a focus on that as well. So as we talk about uh kind of that walkability and accessibility, this is the map of our current, the current campus as it is right now. Um what you see in orange is the parking lots. Um and then you see the buildings outlined in the thin black lines with the thicker black lines outlining the the physical boundaries of the campus. Um as you can see, essentially everything from the middle of campus out is a ten-minute or less walk. So we know right now we do have a very walkable campus, although in the middle of February it may not always feel that way. Um but we do have a walkable campus and we just wanna make sure that we continue uh to focus on that as we move forward. So starting with what the buildings that we currently have on campus right now and planned improvements. Um so one of the things that we are looking at um is Ed Wood, as you may remember, we have a six and a half million dollar earmark through Senator Thune. Uh to begin work on that, so we can expand and renovate our existing area where our trades programs are right now. Um that will allow us to expand a lot of our programs like H VAC and welding, electrician and plumbing, so a lot of those really high in-demand jobs that we know we have right now. As part of that, the tech center, um but which is kind of right in the middle, that is split, we have half the building in the school district. The early learning lab has the other half, um we'd be able to renovate some of that as well, where like our mechatronics is, for example. Um the Sullivan Health Center, um with the building of our new simulation center that opened last spring. Um we know a lot of the space that they, that some of those programs moved out of is not the most conducive to learning, it was great when it was built thirty years ago. It's not necessarily the best space for learning today. Um and so as we think about what are some of the programs that we wanna expand, that we have high demand like sonography, for example. With a better use of the space over there, we'd be able to expand some of those programs and really make that space more useful. Um and then Mickelson, where we have some of our professional studies programs, um as well as our student affairs and enrollment management. Um we know that kind of looking down the road, it would be beneficial to renovate some of that space as well. For example, where Callie sits and with the rest of student success advisors is the library, we know the library of today looks a lot different than the library of yesterday looks. Um and so making sure that we're continuing to tap into the needs um of what the students are both today and going forward um as well. So that's looking at some of our current buildings. Um thinking about future projects, this is kind of the overall campus, I'm gonna break this down for you here um to little smaller pieces. Uh but looking at if we were to have additional student housing, where that may go, um as well as development on that south end of campus. As well, so the picture on the left um is student housing, so you see the A and the B and there's two buildings right in between. That's where the student, the two current student residence halls are that we have on campus, it's directly to the west. Um of the tech center, so kind of between the tech center and Jefferson High School. Um we can house right around two hundred students in that housing right now, um is typically full. Um before the fall semester starts, we, it is not uncommon to have a waitlist of sixty to seventy students on there and that's before students. Quit putting their name on the waitlist because they realize they're not gonna get a spot. So we know the demand is there, it is much more affordable than trying to live in some of the housing across the city and even some of the housing that has gone up. Um around Jefferson High School and and the development with the opening of that high school. Um so we know it is something as a college, we need to continue to think about how are we having affordable housing. Um so we really have two options, we started off um as a group talking about where that plot A is, that's to the west. And behind there's, it's just an open field right now, where Kelly was talking about, they play soccer right now. Um that is the original spot where we had talked about housing and there'd be space for several residence halls there. But if we also wanted to keep both green space but bring the campus in and continue to make it walkable. There's a parking lot right now where the s- that rectangle marked B is, there would also be possible to flip-flop those two if we decided when we get to that point of. We could put the residence hall more to the east and move the parking to the other side um of the current residence hall as well. So a couple of different options for what we'd be looking toward there. The picture on the right um is the south end of campus, so as you're coming up, just for an orientation, coming up Career Drive. Um C T E Academy is down in the south, kind of southeast corner of that picture. Um there's that open field as you're driving toward campus, um that is that land right ne- there, it's about sixty-five acres or so. Um and so they helped lay a plot of what that space could look like as we would need additional buildings. Uh the hub is up in the upper right-hand corner there, uh where that retention pond is a low spot in that field, so it'd be a great point. Um to capture runoff um and other water there. And then again, the idea is there'd be a lot of trees, um some parking, but continuing to have that green space there as well. What each of those individual buildings would be had not been determined, that would just, that would be decided as that growth would be needed and what what would be needed. And then the final aspect is um Career Avenue itself, if you have driven past there particularly. Kind of during morning rush hour or afternoon rush hour, particularly as like Jefferson High School gets out or as people get off of work. Um it is pretty heavily traveled, um people aren't always paying as close of attention as we would like and so while there's eight crosswalks. That go across Career Avenue, safety continues to be something that we are concerned about and wanna be focused on. Um so they helped us come up with several different ideas that we could explore with the city. Um when we get to that point, which could be everything from adding bike lanes, widening the sidewalks, just making it both safer for pedestrians. But then also just giving it more of a, an overall visual appeal to go with it as well. Um adding some windbreaks um across campus, um both attached to buildings and along Career Avenue to help with the wind. Um and then another idea would be to add mini roundabouts, um to help just slow down traffic since that's the purpose of roundabouts as well. Um which would take up minimal additional land, um but could really help slow traffic as well. So those are not conversations that we've started having with the city, but down the road. Um that we'd like to start talking about, are there things that we could do to help just kind of mitigate traffic through those as well? So the full report is attached to your agenda, but this is just kind of the highlights and so what we are asking for today is actually approval of this plan. Uh to give us a direction for the next twenty years as we think about where do we go as a campus from here. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
I guess I just have some process questions.
Yeah, please.
This is the first time I've really looked at this, um so for today, it looks like we're approving a plan, a twenty-year plan?
Correct, is what we're requesting.
Okay, um what, how does this fit in with the strategic plan as well as the foundational capital campaign? Where's, where are those, where are those things at and how are the dollars line landing?
Yeah, yeah, great question. Um so with the strategic plan, uh this will link to it as we think about where do we want our growth to be in growth of programs, I would envision. Um the kind of the buildings on the south end of campus um would be as we have program growth. I would, I think it's pretty much a given as we think about student housing, student housing is part of our current strategic plan. Um and kind of given its focus and some of the wording, it was not one that we were able to make much progress on in this current plan. So will be something I think is pretty much a given, will be part of the future strategic plan as well. With the foundation, um they are going to be s- uh starting a new capital campaign. Um once the current strategic plan for the college gets started, so that way it can be directly aligned with the strategic plan and with this plan as well. Um so that way everything that they do fundraise is directly tied to these college plans as well, so they're kind of, they're wrapping up. So they're kind of, they're wrapping up their current capital campaign, waiting for the next strategic plan and the part of the college to get up and running. So for the college strategic plan, we have started listening sessions. We had our envisioning session on Friday, talking about and looking at our mission, vision, and value statements. Over the next two months, we'll be holding SWAT sessions with faculty, staff, students. There'll be one that this group invited to participate. We have community leaders, industry leaders as well, thought leaders from across communities. So people like Dana Dyke House and the mayor are part of those. And then we'll be in May really diving into what are the actual strategies and tactics that we want. And so the plan is kind of by the end of May to have a good draft that is kind of refined over the summer and that would come here in the fall for the board's review approval.
So I'm a little confused because this is new for me on what we are, because I'm hearing in one sense that we're looking at approving a twenty-year plan. Then the other hand, I'm hearing that more is still to come. So I'm not sure how, like, are we just approving the start of a facilities master plan? Or are we, because there's no dollars attached to it, I'm just...
Sure.
I'm just looking for some clarity. I hope that you can appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yes, there are no dollars attached to it. This is meant to just be a blueprint that as we think about where do we want our growth to go, this just kind of guides it. It's not the set, this building will go specifically here or this building will go here. It's meant to guide future discussions as that strategic plan comes together.
I think if you're okay with this, if, from my standpoint, I'd be interested to hear, you know, my colleagues think. I'm more comfortable in just acknowledging that, that this is going to be coming on.
Sure.
Because it's hard for me to graph or to understand what I'm improving.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
It could just be me.
Oh, that's fine.
So I'll leave that open to the rest of the group.
Yeah.
I think acknowledging this report is a good way for you all to keep moving forward.
Okay.
And for us, when you come back from the fall with more details.
Yeah.
I think that would be a better route. I would agree.
Sure.
No, 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 no.
Faltin' great energy going forward, but we just need, I need some more clarity or what I'm hearing from the group, some more clarity around what this entails.
Sure.
So this'll be fun to look at and dive into and see how this parlay's with the strategic plan that is currently being updated, as well as the connects capital campaign for the foundation and how those two converge, as well as then what the new, or what the budget process is going to look like then going forward. So I'll see how it all fits in together.
Sure, yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Feels like exciting times and then exciting futures. Let's go forward.
Yeah. So what I'm gonna do now is ask, I'd make a motion to acknowledge the facilities master plan report.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second to acknowledge the campus facility plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. The acknowledgement passes. All right, lastly, we have a review and revise of the Sioux Falls School District STC policies and regulations. Dr. Klassman, are you walking us through those?
Yeah, I can walk you through those. And I don't know if we actually have those available to show on the screen, do we, Eric? I don't know if we actually have those.
We have them on the...
You do have them, okay, perfect. So the first one, the DJSTC with expenditures, that is one that would bring us into alignment with the district and is one that the school district has asked us to update. It just raises limits up to fifty thousand dollars. And so like I said, it just aligns with state policy and with the school district as well. The second one on seatbelt use, and then the third one, were both two that were held over from last month, which we worked to clear up the language on and make them more specific. The seatbelt use one was quite redundant. And so we worked to really clean up that language. So thank you, Gail, for pointing that out. And then the one, that third one, the student interrogations, searches, and arrests, to make that clear, kind of that distinction with housing as well. And I know Jim Larson is here. Jim, I don't know if you have anything additional you want to comment on any of those three?
Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Good evening. Jim Larson, compliance officer, coordinating coordinator. Nothing really to add. The first one is, was, we were actually approached by the school district to change so we can bring everything in alignment. We also did some wording changes just to bring it up to date and also noticed that there was some, an error on signing of contracts and that we also fixed that. The seatbelt, again, I agree, was totally redundant, so we condensed that down. And then the third one with student searches, the big thing when there was with housing and residents. So we modified that with the help of Brett and changed it more into, we'll follow what their contracts are saying, so we're not impeding any freedoms.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
No, I appreciate your willingness to go back and rework those because I think they're very solid policies now. So thank you.
Nothing else? Can I get a motion approving review revision of policy regulation, DJSTC, ECESTC, and JIHSTC?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That passes. Anything else for the board today? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Meeting is adjourned.